I'm gonna do one more thing there, Mr. Carey. And you are all set. Have a good meeting.
All right. It is 7:00 PM and we're gonna call this voluminous meeting of the Situit zoning Board of Appeals to order. As we get started, I'd like to read that the Situit zoning Board of Appeals is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. As usual, this meeting is being broadcast on Facebook Live, I think it is, and participation is available on Zoom with the login information for that Zoom availability available on the Board of Appeals website. And without further ado, we will bring our first application, continued from June 16, 2022, brought by Kenton Bongers in element of 17th Circle in Situit, requesting a variance in accordance with 950.2C of the town of Situit zoning bylaws, specifically seeking a variance from the requirements of Section 520.4A, which mandates 150-foot non-deservant buffer zone to tributaries in the Water Resource Protection District for the construction of a single-family dwelling at 5 Lord and Ferg Lane. Welcome back, gentlemen. Let me hear. I trust that you've had at least a short moment to review of the engineering reports submitted to the town by Chesia Consulting.
We have.
And I imagine you have one or two things to say about the content of that report.
Okay. That's good, yeah.
Okay. So when we left here last, we had made our legal argument with regard to the standard for variance.
Yes.
And set that aside. Don't feel like we have to replow that ground.
I agree.
I think we were all pretty much in line on that part.
Good.
So just a couple of things about the Chesia report before I pass it off to Greg to share some greater details. There are a number of assumptions without facts to support those assumptions in the Chesia report. I had thought, based on my review and our discussion, that we were talking about a stormwater management structure hard piped to an open ditch. And in the report, it's a broker intermittent stream and there's a question as to whether, without any factual support or data, as to whether or not it's fed by groundwater. That's all Randy do to us. And my understanding is that this has always been a stormwater drainage structure in countryway that that was hard piped over the middle of the lot, later moved to the side of the lot, and then goes to an open ditch and happens to end up in your surface water supply. That's not a good situation. But that's a situation that exists or preexists this application. It's perhaps a situation that the town of Situit should address at some point. And one of our proposals helps you to address that. But I want to make it clear that we don't concede that this is a broker intermittent stream that's fed by groundwater or any other source other than street water runoff that's captured in a catch basin and hard piped to an open ditch. So there are some other things that not only did Greg to address those, but I just wanted to to make it clear what our position is with regard to what it is that we're talking about. We're talking about stormwater runoff in that ditch that ends up in your water supply. That I'll hand it off to Mr. Morse.
Thank you. For the record, Greg Morse registered engineer Morse Engineering, representing the applicant. Again, a quick recap of the property. You've seen this before. This is the site plan located 5 Williamsburg Lane. It's, as you know, it's a half acre lot, 21,461 square feet. It's in the R2. It's also in the Resource Protection District. All abiding properties to this property have been developed with single-family homes. The proposal was to construct a new three-bedroom single-family home here. What puts us before you again is a request for the variance with respect to the 150-foot no disturb buffer zone to the tributary of the site. Highlighted in blue at the top right of the site here is the culvert that, as Attorney Creed was saying, accepts drainage runoff from Country Way. The catch basin is out of Country Way discharge at that point. From that point, that is technically classified as a tributary. Reading the bylaw, tributaries, I mean, you know, while it meets the technical definition, it's not a babbling brook. It's not a spring. It's not beautiful crystal-inked water. It is water that is coming from a catch basin that is oil-laid and has hydrocarbons and gas in it, suspended solids and corroded solids as well. That being said, in looking at Mr. Chesia's letter, I'm gonna get to the items in here. His first kind of analysis of the project is with respect to the classification of that tributary. He questions whether that is a wetland area or not. He references discussion with the conservation agent. I was surprised to see that Mr. Chesia was the peer review engineer for the abiding subdivision project 305 Country Way. I brought a copy of that subdivision plan, which once through full approval with the town of Situit, with the Conservation Commission and the planning board. For reference, 305 Country Way is approximately 300 feet to the north up here. Ultimately, that tributary from Country Way drains down onto this property. During review of this, Mr. Chesia did the review. We visited the site with the Conservation Commission. We also reviewed it with the Department of Environmental Protection. And it was determined that this was the location of the wetlands in the beginning of the jurisdictional stream. So that, as you've seen on my site plan and as these plans were approved, from this point up to Country Way was non-jurisdictional with respect to it being a wetland resource area of any kind. It is again classified as a tributary, but not as a wetland, not as a broker, not as a intermittent stream. And so that as such, declassifies it from having any applicability under the Wetlands Protection Act and status under that. Looking at John's comments where he reviewed the site issues for review as listed by the board and requested proposed, it looks like there were essentially five items that you asked John to review. The first one was with respect to the stormwater on the site. And John says right here, says stormwater data should be provided as required under the stormwater bylaw. I brought a copy of the stormwater bylaw. The way that we designed this site, this site does not trigger any of the thresholds of the stormwater. It's only applicable if you're disturbing over 15,000 square feet of land. If you have a land use with a higher potential for polluted loads or if you're disturbing slopes with a natural impaction 25% or greater. None of those exist at that site. So the stormwater bylaw is not an applicable bylaw on this site. That being said, we are proposing stormwater controls at this site. We are proposing, what I've highlighted in blue, our dry wells, which should be attached to the roof runoff. We've proposed a rain garden in the back of the 301 and a rain garden off to the side of the driveway, which would take the runoff from the driveway and treat that prior to then flowing over a minimum of 50 feet of natural vegetated area prior to hitting that tributary. So with respect to the quantity of the surface water, we don't feel that we would have any substantial detrimental effect with the quantity of surface water from the site. We've also reviewed this with respect to the areas that are tributary to the site. If you look at the area that's tributary is defined by the USGS, it's approximately 1.4 million square feet of land area that's tributary to this culvert. What we're proposing is only 3,112 square feet of impervious land surface, that being the driveway and the roof. That's less than 1%. It actually is 22% of the tributary area. It's an extremely small negligible amount compared to the watershed that discharges to that location. I would also add that in the recent history of the town of Situit, a pathway or sidewalk was constructed starting at the Ronnie Sean store, being built all the way down to Green Bush, approximately 7,200 linear feet in size, with zero proposed stormwater, zero stormwater mitigating factors associated with that. That added almost an acre of impervious that all discharges to the tributary and to the reservoir through the drainage system without any drainage improvements whatsoever. This project, again, proposes dry wells and proposes two rain gardens. We don't feel that it would have any measurable impact.
Mr. Morse, just to pause there for a second and you certainly have more experience with this type of peer review report than I do. I was expecting item one in Mr. Chesia's report to, in the most simple explanation of what I was expecting, I was expecting him to analyze the water that is currently flowing through this tributary and entering the water source. And then to, whether incredibly scientifically or just conjecture, hypothesize as to how that water would change for better or for worse presumably if this development occurred during construction and then going on into the future. I didn't see that in this report. I could be missing it, I've read it more than once. I didn't see that. Now, I understand he can't say in July what it's going to be like in April and early May, but we've had some rain events since we tasked him with this, which presumably would have had some water flowing through there. And I was expecting to know how clean or dirty that water is. I would be interested to know if if that wasn't what we were getting with this report, I would be interested to know what the rest of the board thought we were going to achieve with this report. Because honestly, I've read this and I'm not sure what good it does us. It's very clear Mr. Chesia, if he was on board, wouldn't be voting to grant a variance based on the information he has thus far. I'd like to boil down whether that's his conclusion as a person in this board asks for advice or whether it's based on the fact that from an engineering standpoint, he thinks it would be impossible to not sully the water source through this development. Anyone? Yes, please. I was caught off guard by this report, to be perfectly honest. I, not to say that I wasn't expecting the report to be against the development, fine. I was expecting a few more measurements.
Not having spoken with John, I'm not in a position where I can defend him, but I believe that Greg's design is, intent of design is to eliminate any increase in runoff from the site via the rain garden, via the rain, some dry wells, you know, some other is in the, put into this project. I think John is only saying that because the calculations are incomplete as they obviously might well be at this stage of the development of the project. And it's really hard for him to say if those measures are totally successful, 90% successful or some other percentage. I mean, the intent is certainly to make them 100% successful and not allowing any more water to leave the site that does, that does today. 90% after a break?
Yes, it is.
And John's just saying, looking at the material he was given, that conclusion can't be scientifically arrived at.
What does he need to derive a a summed version of a hypothesis?
On this, I'm not sure.
Okay. I, that's why I asked for the, I think we need to know that from him because if he I think first, I'd like to know how dirty the water flowing through that tributary is right now. The applicant is at least implying that it is pretty dirty right now. They're almost implying that it would be pretty hard to make it worse. Now, I, I would like our peer review engineer to comment on that specifically because I think it has bearing on whether or not a variance within 150 feet of this tributary would defeat the purpose of the bylaw. And then I would like to know generally what this size home on a one and a half acre lot produces for runoff and contamination to abiding lands 151, or in this case, I don't have the plan out, call it 90 feet away. And then I would like to know what your proposals for mitigation do to mitigate that. And I would like our peer review engineer, no disrespect to you, to agree with you saying this is how bad the water is in the tributary now. This is the typical runoff that would happen 91 feet away from the typical three-bedroom home. And this is how much cleaner we're gonna make it with our mitigation efforts. And so what does make it in is inconsequential, and I'd like to know if our peer review engineer agrees with that or not. And if he disagrees with it, I'd like to know if there's some further mitigation efforts that can be done so that they could agree with it, or if it's just impossible or is cost-effective to achieve that mitigation. Because if it's not cost-effective to you or not possible to achieve that mitigation, then for me to show my cards, I don't think I can find that you've met the variance standard thereby building and not defeating the purpose of the bylaw. But if it is possible to mitigate making that water any worse than it is now, then I don't see how I couldn't vote that you can have relief without defeating the purpose of the bylaw. It might be that the science and the available data can't get us to where we can be sure, but I'm pretty sure there's science and available data that could get us a little closer than we are right now. Yes, please.
So of the questions and topics that you've raised here, John does know extensively through this, he does talk about water quantity coming on the site, runoff coming on the site, quantity of you know, which would be respect essentially to respect a flood. We're not in a flood-prone area. There's no known flooding problems here. Is flooding a concern of the board? Or I understand you're more concerned about the quality of the water coming along with this. If you were concerned with flooding, we would be looking at potentially adding a larger detention basin. There's some other structures that way. Now again, how we've designed the site, it falls under all of the requirements for a detention basin because we're disturbing so little area on this site with respect to the bylaw. That could take it to that next level if flooding is a concern. We could do a detention basin type thing. But if it's purely quality of water flowing to the tributary, which is quality, then I think what we have here is, if I can provide additional data for John.
Going into this, I wasn't overly concerned with flooding. I I'm not sure that that's really where the buffer zone was going. I think the buffer zone was going in that we have natural land within 150 feet of the tributary and just putting natural things into our water. And if we put not natural things within 150 feet of the tributary, they stand to put not natural things in our water. What can we do to avoid and mitigate that? I wasn't so sure with flooding.
I don't think flooding is, is part of the the standard backside we're talking about. We have a control that's not a concern of flooding, not in the area. It's not, what you said, it's not a flooding area.
I, we're down.
Well, we're concerned with quality, not with quantity.
Waste water runoff, waste water and stormwater, right? That's what we're talking about.
I don't, I don't know if it would be helpful for you. It doesn't involve Cituit. But I did have occasion to be involved with Marshfield's stormwater spoils, where they stored them. And runoff from those. And I have an analysis of what was in those spoils. Now, again, that's not Cituit, it's Marshfield, but it's clean catch basins, just like this with Dave. And there's an analysis there which will give you an idea of what's typically in a catch basin on a town of Situit.
I struggle because this report was very clearly against you building anything here. Without a lot of detail in if you build this, if the negative thing that will happen. And I do see many places where it states that the information is not available. I do wish I had a little more specificity on which information wasn't available so we could decide if we could get it for Mr. Chesia. So I what I'm coming up with and you tell me if this makes more sense is I would think it makes sense for the applicant to be more specific as to the typical runoff from this type of proposed development up to a radius as to where we'll reach this tributary. How that runoff will be better by the mitigation systems you proposed. And also, if you are able, an analysis of that runoff, the quality and quantity that would reach the tributary, given everything you proposed, versus the water that is in the tributary now, when there is water in the tributary. If you came to those conclusions with specificity and with data, then I think, not being a scientist, that Mr. Chesia would have something to agree or disagree with. And to the extent you provided specifics, he would be able to agree or disagree with specificity. I think that makes sense. And then maybe so the burden is on you to come up with data, at least. Here, there's a lot of, we don't have any data. And so I think it makes sense to have you come up with that. And then if Mr. Chesia disagrees with your data, or thinks it's insufficient, or that you drew the wrong conclusions, so be it. I mean, there's a few other notes to, a few other items, but I think really one and two, I think can be boiled down to at least for me, what's the state of the water flowing through the tributary now? Is the water coming off your development going to make it noticeably worse or not? I think that's, that's the key question here. It's gonna make it noticeably worse. Don't think we can give you a variance without defeating the purpose of the bylaw. If it's not going to make it noticeably worse, I think whether or not we give you the variance, you probably meet the variance standard and you'll have grounds for an appeal. So I think that's right now, I don't have enough data to know whether or not you're gonna make it worse. Am I barking up the red tree for everybody else here? Yeah? George?
Yeah, I mean, I read this too, and it's, I think without that, we're at an impasse, right?
I think that's right.
So, so I'm coming out exactly where you are on this, right? We need, we need some kind of calculations based on, you know, hard data or reasonable assumptions. You know, pre and post, right? And, and then present those to to our peer reviewer, who will, you know, comment appropriately. And then we can make, you know, those, those decisions based on the interplay.
I think that more or less addresses one and two. Three is more the same. We got pre, post, and during, right?
Right.
Mr. Chesia did lay out some areas which made perfect sense to me that it sounds like he'd like some more information from you as to, okay, you're gonna do your pre, post. The during, it sounds like dependent on these things, you could have more or less impact on the tributary and the potential effluent into the tributary. So it'd be great if you could round out some more information on that so you could review it. The de-restriction is what it is. The just got small. The, you know, we'll, we'll talk about nitrogen fertilizer when we get a little bit further down. I think that's that might be step six. We're still, you know, step one, two. The $10,000 to allow the town to somehow further mitigate the overall situation here. For me, I'm not sure I need to talk about whether or not that's sufficient. Until we know how dirty the water is in the tributary, nobody's given us any of that data right now. Could be Poland Springs and it could be, you know, Gotham City. I just don't know. I think once we have that data, then you and Mr. Chesia can go back and forth on whether or not $10,000 is sufficient to do whatever needs to be done or maybe better. Those are the next steps that make sense to me. I think you're essentially gonna have to show your math on why this isn't gonna make what's in your D and S way to our water source worse with data, with calculations, maybe with some assumptions. And then I think we need to give Mr. Chesia with a little bit more guidance from this board, and that's, that's on us and probably on me. The request to confirm, deny, or 50/50 your conclusions and your data. Bob, does that sound like a reasonable plan?
Yeah, I think we need to think through exactly what we're, what we're after.
Yeah.
We're not too close. Yes.
I think that, I think it's probably unfair to expect our peer review engineer, especially for what I thought was a pretty reasonable quote that he gave us for initial review, to create that data. So I think maybe I prefer that it come from you and he be able to review it. Okay. Anybody? I do want to open it up to the public. Just a little bit here, but anything else from? No? George? Members of the public, and I'm gonna go to, I see a town board member here as well. So yes, please, just your name and your board for the record.
Bruce Arden, he's 23, he had a professional name, also on the Water Resource Commission. So I agree that water quality is the most important issue. I really haven't seen the plan. I know there's some pitch to the site. And my question would be building on the site, I just can't have dry wells positions, but is the pitch towards the swell or tributary increase with this old building? Could that drive more water towards the tributary? I see that you had a rain garden kind of in between where the building would take place and the top of that tributary. Um, but I haven't seen the plans. I don't know how um wide that is, how much pitch there is inside that. Or if there's a small burn to back. Those kinds of questions I have.
Sure. So the plan, we certainly make the plans available to you and they're available in the building office. I I think there is a pitch. I think Mr. Chessia raised in his report that at least at one point, the pitch is greater than twenty-five percent, which would require in and of itself a variance, which we'll obviously look at at the same time. Um, but I, I would expect that the the pitch, which again, we're concerned with the pitch because of the runoff into the tributary, would be part of your analysis, which would then be reviewed by Mr. Chessia. And Bruce, I didn't hear anything else on that, or that was a good question. Now, but absolutely, the pitch specifically, there there is a proposal that in a place it's more than twenty-five percent, that that will be part of Mr. Morrison's more detailed proposal and and Mr. Chessia's review. Anyone else from the public? Guys, Vegas was gonna take a flood back, you didn't talk.
Is the only reason I'm here tonight, and I'm only gonna talk about this one. Uh Steve Bjorklund, uh eight sixty-one Main Street, Norwell. I'll be back in Situate hopefully soon. Uh, just so the board understands, this is actually a a typical letter that Mr. Chessia would do for her review, which is please don't answer the question that we ask you, let's talk about everything else. That being said.
So Mr. Bjorklund, Mr. Chessia is not here tonight, but in large part because I suggested that he didn't need to be.
No.
And I I take part responsibility, mostly because maybe I I and the board hadn't come to the conclusion yet. We did not give Mr. Chessia a very specific instruction on this, and and I think now, hopefully, we will be able to, once we see the revised application.
Well, there there are the conclusions that are drawn, uh and I've gone through his letter a number of times, just like you haven't, probably, you know, shake my head, and I'm like, what what's he really trying to get at here? Um, to me, as far as runoff and the the water quality in the town of Situate, uh he makes a statement, a new septic system is proposed with a micro-fast treatment system, probably the best septic system that somebody can install to protect the groundwater. So the next statement he makes is compared to no development, okay, this would degrade groundwater. Well, I would think that you might wanna say to him, if we have a hundred and fifty-foot no-touch zone, what would happen if the septic system was a hundred and sixty feet away and didn't have this micro-fast system with it, okay? So they're they're adding the things to protect, to be able to approach into that zone. So I would think that you would wanna ask him what the balance would be, rather than don't make this lot buildable by granting any variance at all.
You you're raising good points, but an administrative Board of Appeals, maybe the burden isn't on us to ask those questions and make your arguments for you, in my opinion. But if you made those arguments, I think Mr. Bjorklund feels, and he might be right, in my opinion, that they might be valid arguments, and we would certainly ask our peer review engineer to review or agree with. Um, but I'm not sure it's on the board to make those points for.
Well, so the so the applicant will have to come back and basically say that by continuing to refer to this as an intermittent stream when it clearly is not, it's the applicant's burden to show you it's not an intermittent stream.
See, I I'm not sure any of us were judging this application differently, whether it's an intermittent stream, it's a tributary, the hundred and fifty-foot buffer applies. We need to show, for me personally, to vote that this is met a variance standard, we need to show that this can be built without degrading our water supply more than, and like you said, more than something that's a hundred and seventy feet away from a tributary.
And that's a big difference.
And and whether or not it's an intermittent stream, and I'll be perfectly honest, I'm not up on the definition and distinction between a tributary and intermittent stream. I think I might be, but I I'm not up on the exact definition. What I know and what I'm certain of is I need to worry about the effect on the groundwater, which was the purpose of the bylaw, before I can rule on whether or not we've met the variance. So I I don't wanna get hung up on that intermittent stream or not. I'm just not sure.
I just think there's a difference.
You were nodding.
Yeah, it's uh, it's a tributary, the reality of it is it's, I would refer to it as a swell, it's dry, unless there's sufficient uh rain runoff.
Right. And I I think, and I I'm certain your contention is, is that when it is a flowing tributary, it is degrading our surface water. And that this development is essentially going to be putting water, to the extent it puts water into our surface water, it's going to be the same or better than the water this tributary puts in. I I have to imagine that we can get some test tubes out and give some hard data to show that. And then Mr. Chessia will be able to agree or disagree. Can we get more rain? Yeah. So that that's fair. Um, it makes sense. We'll be running out of computer. What's that? We'll be running out of computer. I like it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Get the solar cups out. Mr. Bjorklund, did you have anything else?
No, again, just as I go through the letter, there's just a point after point after point where, you know, our our bylaw clearly talks about slopes that are twenty-five percent being natural slopes, and we're not supposed to affect those. This site's a disturbed site, and there was fill pushed in years and years ago, which created a slope over twenty-five percent. John basically says a slope over twenty-five percent proposed near the wetland buffer is indicated on the plans and doesn't comply. Well, it doesn't have to, because it's not a naturally occurring slope, and the bylaw clearly says naturally occurring slopes. So it just goes on and on with things that now Greg will have to go through point by point and say, this is not correct, this is not correct. And then I guess it's gonna probably get to you guys to open up the bylaw and read what the bylaw says and and with Greg's response, and agree or disagree with your own consultant, because there's clearly stuff in here that is just incorrect.
I, again, I I think that if he was, that was probably more of a point of note for the board. I'm not very hung up on the twenty-five foot slope. We've actually, the most recent variance that this board has granted was a variance from the twenty-five foot slope. I think us and the planning board and Tom Tom all realize, I don't wanna speak for those boards, that the the effect of the overall project and the runoff it creates far supersedes whether or not a slope is twenty-six percent or twenty-four percent. Um, so I I think it's, I don't wanna get into the weeds on the slope until we get into the the hard data on the runoff from this project. Because I think I think that's the, that's the meat and potatoes of this issue. I think if we have something like that from the applicant, this board can be more specific with Mr. Chessia, and what we're looking for in terms of his more specific review, we can start to get to does this defeat the purpose of the bylaw or not? Uh, I think that's what we need to have. Understood. Um. Bob, George, anything else?
Nope, I think that's it.
Any other members of the public, anything else? I assume we're looking for a continuous then?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. Um. We have available. This will put us I will mean, I will not be at the August meeting. I will be out of town. Our meeting in August is on the eighteenth. The continuous would be until then, we have plenty of members of the board here to hear the next one. Unless you and Mr. Chessia need it more than that.
I'm not here on the eighteenth either.
Right. Yeah. You don't want me along. That won't be able to enter that. Yeah, and 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 maybe that extra time makes sense, because I think the best case scenario is your report, Mr. Chessia is able to review it, and then either you have time to discuss it outside of this hearing, or you both discuss it in the hearing. But if it's going to be discussion on the hard math and facts and engineering of it, I just as soon as that you discuss it offline, so that uh you know, so that we all don't have to pretend that we know what you're talking about. Um.
Get the blood in that.
That's right. Yeah. Uh, but you, I mean, you guys are gonna start talking about parts per million, and I'm not gonna be able to keep up. Do you have a um a September date? September fifteenth. There Thursday? And Warren, if you're crazy, we'll be back in this. Great. Right. And post? Well, just to conclude, so you're looking for September fifteenth? Yep. So I'll make a motion that grant a continuous request to September fifteenth hearing. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you, thank you.
We move on to our second application, continued from June sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, brought by Matthew Cadman of sixty-two Curtis Street in Situate, requesting a special program finding in accordance with forty-eight, section six, and section eight, ten, one, two of the bylaw, and any other leak that the board can make grant, to allow the construction of additions to a pre-existing non-performing single-family dwelling at sixty-two Curtis Street, increasing the growth floor area by more than twenty percent. How are you?
Good.
Not bad. Welcome back.
Thank you.
So I should with the lot coverage. And we're proposing a dry well. What's even dry? Okay. So the addition of that dry well is the only change to this plan. Is that, is that accurate? Uh, we added a dot on that for the setbacks as well, but yeah. Thank you.
Okay, uh what?
Yes, please.
So the latest I've ever devised, seven five, twenty twenty-two, is that still what?
Uh, yes.
So that actually increased, that just makes a difference. I'm not trying to stack it actually. But it looks like the proposed additions and reasons, I just might couple a few from the original plan that I have. So the dwelling computation shows a little bit more area of the total square footage increase shows a little bit tighter, more, I'm trying to think. It's minimal, but just, just to know there is a change.
Four, it's go by fourteen by four. Go by sixteen by four. Uh, the other side looks to be the same. So all right, lot coverage, calculations. You know? You didn't, you didn't include the driveway on the left, because it's got a driveway on the on purpose, so.
Changes less, but there are. Changes the, you know, situation.
Existing lot coverage calculations. I'm looking at the new plan, right? Existing dwelling, one thousand point, one thousand and nine square feet, shed seventy-three, shed shed one forty-six. Proposed dwelling is six hundred square feet bigger roughly. The sheds are the same presumably, but we combined them in the second calculation. And okay, eighteen hundred and ninety-three out of fifteen, I guess. So the increase is existing feed driveway. And remind me of the bylaw, what did? Is it based on the increase or based on the total?
Yeah, it's uh fifteen percent of uh the land, or twenty-five thousand square feet, whichever is larger.
Or twenty-five.
That's up. It's fifteen percent.
Or twenty-five hundred, or thirty?
Twenty-five hundred square feet, whichever is larger.
So and that's total, right? So the paved driveway isn't on here, which is part of what we were looking for, I think, right?
Yes, that was the whole discussion was the entire purpose, in in purpose, service.
Yeah.
Everything covered by buildings, everything covered by asphalt, everything covered by brick.
Right. So I think, I think the idea is that the driveway is, really looks like it's going to get us over twenty-five hundred square feet, and it's gonna take us over fifteen percent. So are are you saying that then you're conceiving that you will be over that, and then you're gonna manage it with the dry well?
Yeah, I was under the, the dry well's supposed to take care of our, yeah.
Doesn't that require a stormwater permit for which we are not granting it, are we? It doesn't. Okay. Oh, wonderful. The uh NTM might actually be on, is it, Mr. Webby, and on the Yes. Mr. Webby, if you're able to uh raise your zoom hand, or turn on your video and raise your actual hand, if I would, you mean, stop sharing. Thank you. Uh, we should be allowed to mute you, and and we can hear from you, okay?
Uh, hi, Joe Webby, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, how are you?
Not bad.
So so what was the question?
Who? Question here is, is uh, you've added a dry well, and we'd we'd like to understand how that deals with the stormwater bylaw here.
I I have no, I have no awareness of the stormwater bylaw. That's not what I was asked to to do.
I understand. Okay. Uh, for those of you watching this train wreck, for lack of a better term, I apologize. Uh, we unfortunately just got the plan, so I wasn't part of my preparation, the revised plan, I should say. And we are uh we are deep in the bylaw on this one, with the stormwater. Public can bear with this for a second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Appreciate it. I think the requirement of the Water Resource District is that you keep it under fifteen percent imperious. If you go over that, you're allowed up to twenty percent with artificial recharge, which would be the dry well. So the question would be, on the site, are they proposing less than twenty percent imperious coverage or not?
So I I do think we need that calculation, which we still don't have. And I I I apologize to put more homework on you, but I do think we were pretty clear last time that we did need the calculation for the driveway as it's imperious.
I said it's not, this must have been, it was a on pre-existing non-performing law, where it was supposed to take care of what we were adding, presenting.
So So I, I understand that. Whereas a stormwater bylaw speaks to a total impervious area on the lot. If you were not changing the impervious area as part of your application, for instance, if you were only going up, we wouldn't be performing this analysis, because we wouldn't be adding any impervious area, and the prior improvements would be pre-existing non-conforming grant filed. But whereas you are adding impervious area, a noticeable amount, we need to review the total amount of impervious area on the site, which of course includes the paved driveway. Then we will need to, I have to go back and review the stormwater bylaw, determine if you are at these thresholds, whether or not the mitigations that you're proposing are sufficient. I, I see the drywall and without having had a plan in advance, but showed the proposed drywall, I didn't review what conclusions we need to come to to determine if that drywall is sufficient to achieve what it needs to achieve. And that, and you haven't presented us any information on your contentions on what that drywall achieves to make it comply with the stormwater.
Yeah, I believe that the calculations for the drywall were for a uh, a one-inch storm. I believe we included the total area of the, the, the proposed, total proposed dwelling. But as far as I remember, we did not include the uh, the driveway, so we can certainly review that and um, you know, obviously I have to read the stormwater bylaw and, and you know, make sure that we have conformance with it.
Yeah, so just so we can be super clear on this. Um, if you could provide us a calculation, not just uh regarding the impervious layer, uh, impervious area of the dwelling, but all the impervious area uh on the property, okay? Um, and then when you do the uh drywall calculation, uh, please take into account all the impervious area, right? Obviously, you should read the stormwater bylaw, see what it says, uh, to see if, in fact, you can, this can be done, right, because it may not be, um, or it may not be doable, uh, it may. All right, so, so I think, I think with all that information, we can, uh, we can make an analysis and a determination.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Definitely need the, the area measurements, the driveway. And then I, it would be helpful to have the revised plan with that information on it a little bit further in advance, so we can conduct a better review. So Bob can review, Bob with a little bit more notice will be able to say at this meeting what relief he feels you need, just, he's the one that has to give the permit, if there's a reason he thinks he can't give the permit, then you have to appeal for relief to this board, so that he doesn't have to deny your permit. And so we can go through that process and, and have some more fuller motion before you have the next hearing. Um, apologize, don't like anybody sending, sending anybody back to drawing boards, but definitely need a little bit more information on the product and bylaw and the area that's right. Thank you. Yes. Yeah, and I, I think you're correct, that to the extent this walkway that we're looking at is impervious, we need, we need that in the calculation as well. So that continuance would be to our August eighteenth meeting, or to get your back on the list. Absolutely, so I'll make a motion that we uh we continue the sixty-two Curtis, right? The sixty-two Curtis application to our August eighteenth meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We are going to move on to our third application, continued from June sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, brought by Allison Rock Studer of fifty-nine Country Walk in Shells, Connecticut, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with M E L forty-eight, section six, and section eight, ten point two of the bylaw, and any other relief that the board appeals may grant to allow for the raising and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at ten Alden Street, increasing the gross floor area by more than twenty percent. Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, Gregory Morse, for the student engineer Morse Engineering, representing the applicant Allison Rock Studer, the property located at ten Alden Street, which is at the Marshfield end of Hummer. As was just written to the record, we're seeking a special permit finding in accordance with section eight, ten, two A of the bylaw, as well as section four, seventy point six, which is the floodplain and watershed protection overlay district. The property is located in the R three zone. The existing site was constructed with a single-family home about nineteen fifty, per the assessors' records, and it's non-conforming with respect to several items. The lot width is at forty feet where a hundred is required. The lot area is thirty-two hundred where ten thousand is required. The frontage is forty where a hundred is required. The front yard setback is at fifteen point eight feet where thirty is required, and the side yard setback is at five point six feet on the right where eight feet is required. Uh, depicted on the plan, you can see Alden Street at the top of the page. The uh, dark black lines represent the perimeter property line, you can see the location of the existing house in light gray. The proposed house would be a new home constructed largely in the same location. It is a two-and-a-half-story house, though. Uh, it complies with the same front yard setback at fifteen point nine feet. It maintains the five-point-seven-foot side yard setback, so it's in greater compliance by a tenth of a foot. There's no change in the lot area, no change in the lot width or the frontage. The existing floor area is eight hundred and fifty-six. Because of the increase in the two-and-a-half-story house, it goes to seventeen hundred, which represents a ninety-eight point five percent increase. With respect to the floodplain and watershed protection district, I would add that the existing house is non-compliant with FEMA standards. The new house would be in full compliance with FEMA standards and would be elevated. I turn it over to you.
Anyone? George?
No comments, no questions.
Bob, anything?
No. We'll have to wait for your requirements when it gets to that stage.
Yeah. Uh, anyone from the public or on Zoom? Any questions or comments on the application at ten Alden Street in Cituate? Or Zoom participants, you can turn on your camera, raise your actual hand, or use the options menu to raise your Zoom hand. All right. I will make a motion that the board find that the proposed raise and reconstruction shown on a plan drawn by Morse Engineering in dated four twenty-five, twenty-two does not create any new nonconformities, and to the extent it intensifies any existing nonconformities, that such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood, and that the board grant the request for relief.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Guys, thank you very much. Do you need, who's up?
Um, forty-five Grasshopper.
I'm sorry, who's up to write that decision? That's quite a right, I did not.
Um, I don't know.
You don't know, that's a lot, or you don't lay that one.
I'll do it.
Who's up? Thank you, George. All right. I'm gonna make a motion that the air conditioner start working, man. Yeah, they just stopped, that's cool. Uh, we are going to start with our our fourth application, brought by David Pratt of thirty-three Two-Two Road in Marshfield, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with forty-eight, section six, and section eight, ten point two of the bylaw, and any other relief that the board appeals may grant to allow for the construction of a two-story addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at forty-five Grasshopper Lane in Cituate. Good evening.
Good evening. How you doing?
All right.
I'm David Pratt.
I'm Keith Armstrong.
Hello.
I'm the builder, Keith's the homeowner. Um, so we have at forty-five Grasshopper Lane, uh, as stated, Mr. Chairman, uh, existing non-conforming single-family home. Uh, we are proposing to add a second story uh, of four hundred and fifty square feet um to the existing single-family home. It's a portion of the house, uh, which looks like the uh side of the property, or it is the side of the property, but it looks like the back of the house, the way it's situated on the property. Um, has an existing uh, single-story uh living area. And what we're proposing is to take that down, um, using the same footprint, um, excavate, pour a new foundation, and rebuild the single-story within the same footprint and add a second story.
Somebody's getting a master back. Nice work. So entirely, it's a, it's a little hard to see from the crosshatching, but obviously, all the existing setbacks on the side are standing exactly the same. So no change to what we call the drip edge here in Cituate whatsoever?
No.
It's just, it's gonna be a story higher.
Yeah. Exactly.
And, and basically, the only reason you guys are before us is because you're half a percentage point above the increase of floor area, you're twenty and a half percent.
Yeah, so that's a non-conforming structure. Yeah, so the, our bylaw actually allows if your increase in the same footprint is twenty percent or less, uh, the building is expected to make that determination on its own. You're obviously over twenty percent, as much, um, precisely one toilet, and so you would give.
Okay.
Chris, nothing? Bob?
Good.
Um, members of the public on forty-five Grasshopper Lane, any questions or comments? Zoom folks as well? I'll do it. Okay. I will make a motion that the board grant the request for a special permit finding that the proposed second-story addition does not create any new nonconformities, and to the extent it intensifies existing nonconformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. And of course, that addition is shown on the plan drawn by Morse Engineering and dated four twenty-one, twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna move to our fifth application, brought by Mike Finney of Six Stockbridge Road in Cituate, here at Morse Engineering, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with forty-eight, section six, and sections four seventy-eight, twenty, and nine fifty point two D of the bylaw, and any other relief that the board appeals may grant to authorize a non-conforming usage located at one fifty-seven First Parish Road in Cituate to be changed, extended, or altered to specified uses, which include the construction of additional area for garage buildings for storage of trucks and armored vehicles, which are not substantially more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming uses on subject property. All right.
Thank you, again for the record, Gregory Morse for student engineering, here with the property owner, Mike Finney. This was just written to the record, this is a request for several things, a special permit finding, uh, and any other relief that the board may grant pursuant to Mass General Act forty-eight, section six, uh, for the property that Mike owns at one fifty-seven First Parish Road, such property, which is proposed to be changed, extended, or altered to specified uses, specifically construction of a new garage building for the property. You may know this property better as uh Finney's Garage or O'Brien's Car Care, also with us as primary tenant, uh, Steve O'Brien. This property is in the R two zoning district, approximately seventy-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-one square feet in size. It's been owned by the Finney family since the nineteen forties, and since that time it serves as a service station, a junkyard, a salvage yard, a truck and auto storage area, and a crumpling storage yard. I just passed out kind of an aerial photo that depicts the site. Uh, you know, you'll see the primary garage building out front of the site, but there is extensive area out back that is historically and continues to be used to its day. The proposal here is to construct a new building in that rear portion of the property. The new building is approximately fifty-four feet by a hundred feet, and will be a garage building. Uh, it would allow for indoor storage of salv- in salvage autos, it would allow tow trucks a place to park during inclement weather. It would allow, and it would comply with all applicable building zoning setbacks for the R two zoning district. The relief that was specified in our application in the red was the same relief requested almost diagonally across the street, a former polygon with motors, where they constructed a similar uh building for, again, the storage of vehicles and trucks to keep them out of even the weather of that location previously. The special permit finding would allow the existing non-conforming uses to be extended and altered by construction of a garage, which results in a use that we feel is not substantially that detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood. There'd be no material change in the use of the site at this location, as you can see in the photo, the entire site is used. The building is proposed in a location that's already used for auto salvage and storage of uh tow trucks and vehicles. There's no extension of the area. It puts the existing use that's outdoors under cover, therefore reducing sound voters and provides better aesthetics to the property and butters. It creates a more organized site and safer site, lessens trucks idling outside during the winter than they're comfortable to do. We turn it over to you for your request.
What? No.
No, I'm, I'm happy to see that it's doing.
So so, just to get into the, the uses for a second, we'll go back to how this was was listed. It talks about to be changed, extended, or altered, but not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming uses. Right? What uses are different? Or what, what change in uses are you proposing?
So what, as far as beneficial purposes?
Any change, there's what you're doing on the property now and what you will be doing in a grant this relief.
Where the buildings will be placed.
Yep.
Um, the tow trucks that have been mentioned, they are already currently parked in one of the locations.
Sure.
And
so I, I think that's what I'm getting at, is, is it, is it, is that a misnomer, is there no change in use?
There's no, there's no change in use of the property.
Okay, no change in use, it's just indoor versus outdoor, um, with the building. And that's where I wanna make sure I understand, so you're you're proposing a new structure on the property. Right? But the structure, does the structure need relief from code? Other than the fact that it's a structure for a non-conforming use?
So I, I come in and met with the building.
Yeah.
I, I come in and met with the building inspector about this one, and, uh, I think it was suggested that we would come in front of the board
Sure.
for a finding in this case, because we are in the residential zoning district.
Right.
We certainly are increasing the building that's, uh, you know, decreasing the, the nonconformal floor areas of the property for sure. But we're not changing the use in the building that will quite enough fully complies with zoning, uh, dimensional requirements as far as setbacks and all the problems.
But we've, and we've done, talking about intensification, but
Yeah.
The intensification isn't even occurring, you're just wrapping something that's already there in a building.
Yeah, didn't, didn't mean to, uh, to imply that you shouldn't be here at all. Just wanna make sure I'm catching everything you need from us. And I, and I think it was a, it was a little confusing because it, it sort of implies a change, but I, I don't believe you're changing it. You're changing your use in that this was a salvage yard and garage in the way of a certain number of square feet, and now it's gonna be a salvage yard and garage with more indoor garage square feet.
Essentially, where it's already placed will just be rent.
And the contention is, is that having this structure there makes the existing nonconforming use less?
I would say less than about anything.
To the neighborhood than, than it is today.
Right.
Um...
You don't do salvage, it's not a junkyard in that aspect.
Nope.
You still...
Back in the day it was, but until I took over, I had cleaned that up since.
Ah. You're not expanding the towing operation, you're not gonna be having wrecks and all that anymore than...
It's just when a call comes in at one morning, you don't have to shovel for snow off the back.
What is it from there?
Yeah, it's not like you're expanding to an area of property that wasn't previously used for all of this, because your trucks are there now. It's always nice when you have, like, a commuter rail line in an unused town land, less neighbors in there, so that's... George?
Yeah, no, uh, I like, I like where the gar- where the new garage is, and, uh, I, I, you know, I, I think that, uh, whatever intensification this is, from a structural standpoint, it is, if anything, improving, um, uh, the neighborhood, because we're moving outdoor stuff inside.
Yep. Bob, anything else? Any members of the public with question or comment on the addition of one fifty-seven First Parish Road? Yes, sir, just your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Sean Zinsteister, uh, the, uh, nine eighth circle.
Yep.
Uh, actually, we've, in the spirit of partnership for the project, I love the fact that the garage is gonna be my starting white pollution and sound pollution that comes from natural apportion for business. I do have one concern, however, that, like, the nature of the structure, like, the existence of it does suggest that there is a natural expansion of the business. And I would love to partner with the garage because I have their children, and actually the garage is extremely responsible about handling their business, the chemicals that are used. I grow things on my land, I have young children, there's garbage that I constantly find on my property that was in defense. My dog is six several times. When I first took over the property back in two thousand twenty, we spent significant money selling mounds of rats that get filed up from just trash and garbage. So I love the idea that we're building a structure that organizes that, gets the trucks inside, moves some of that. Um, but I do just have a natural concern about how we can partner with the residential area, just to make sure that this is going to attract new forms of business and exit growth that we can expect as neighbors, uh, aware and have. Appreciate you sharing your opinion.
Of course. So, you know, to his, his point that uh, certainly doesn't signal a, a decrease in the size of your operation. And, um, do you have anything to say in response in terms of what sounds like, um, encroachments at least of this business onto the butters property? It seems like this is on the other side from where this is going, but I, but I understand his point that
Yeah, I understand.
it's, it's, it's probably, at least in some ways, a little bit of an increase in the operations.
Um, I think right now on, as far as the trash goes, what we can do is actually, it will be eliminated in some of our dumpsters, and the ones that are currently there will move on the backside of the building. And that will deserve, you know, on the times that it happens to be overflowed, it will, you know, actually give more force to that side, and I will also myself, in much my attention, that I was unaware of that that was happening.
Yeah.
So...
I, um, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm looking on, on satellite and whatnot, and it's pretty hard for you to probably see that property line particularly, but again, you were certainly saying, it sounds like there's, you know, there's a garage on the other side of that property line, that is what it is. And I think to your point, presumably, any increase in interior storage area, whether it be vehicles, trash, equipment, whatever it is, is, is not going to exacerbate those problems that you're mentioning, presumably. It's going to hopefully lessen. I think maybe what your point is, is, um, you know, what would lessen it better than anything is some more communication to the property.
Yeah, with this building going, it will not increase the amount of, uh, work that generates out of businesses already there.
Right.
You know?
Hopefully, it's a, it's a washer or less of the activity, at least along that property. Yeah. Anyone else have any follow-up there, or any other questions, anyone on Zoom? With questions or comments as to one fifty-seven First Parish Road?
Yeah, I do.
Yes, sir.
I've lived three days, three, three five, I've lived it quite two years. This is mostly the one I've lived two years. We've managed, and previously lived in the household, we've struggled with that, they moved out because of Finney's garage. Noise always, out of control, we lost Miss Finney several times, she thinks going on, and at the same time, people were there all night long, driving cars, trucks in and out of the place, and I don't know what the hours are. I mean, they worked some nights at ten o'clock, eleven o'clock at night, people handling trucks, it's a service over there.
Okay, I, I understand that, I, I believe that some of those hours, they mentioned it, the towing operation, which is obviously is on call, so I, I think that explains some of the hours.
Right, excuse me, Sean mentioned, you know, the, the noise.
Yes.
Maybe if they wanted, it's all sounds good, but I've heard this before, maybe build up barriers, barriers from the households, so we can hear all the noise, I mean, it's, it's really crazy over there. It's loud, it's, being a homeowner, it's not a comfort situation.
I, I do understand that, and, and so we've actually dealt with this sort of situation on the board before, where we've had nonconforming uses, very longstanding nonconforming uses, within a residential neighborhood, in, and, and I would like to hear from the butters, but what they're proposing here is a, what appears to be a pretty sizable structure to bring portions of that operation, which are currently outside, inside. So what they are telling us is that this is going to make their business easier to run and make the business that they are running less obtrusive to a butters. I, if you disagree with that, or if you have a concern that it's going to make it more obtrusive, this board would very much like to hear that. Sorry, I, I can't hear you. Okay.
So, um, that's these current ten minutes, our own?
Sure.
Little question.
Yes.
Um, what is being done from a ground contamination perspective, and not really digging out something that's bad, I mean, junkyard at times, um, scrap, we named it, I don't, I don't think it's a, I don't worry, it's a, it's a period of time, and not going to be digging that out to create more for the living. What is being done to, um, uh, motion that has not been to contribute to their quality, water quality, so?
Sure, I, I don't know the answer to that, so they are not asking for any relief from, from building or environmental codes, and even if they were, we wouldn't necessarily have a way for them to give it, but I, you have a response on that?
Um, uh, I was just going to say that the style of building that you're going with, there isn't even actual concrete foundation, it is a, an auger-style cylinder tube. So as far as any major dirt or earth-altering process, it's really not existent.
So there, there's no, there's no foundation, it basically is a, it's a drop pad?
Pile.
Piles, yeah.
Piles.
What do you got next?
Four feet down, very normal.
Sure, and Bob, the code for construction, environmental codes, and whatnot, obviously, all need to be followed as part of building permit application. Again, to answer your question, no, no relief or special circumstance is being asked for here for any, any relief from any of the typical rules for construction debris, spraying down, things like that. They'll, they'll have to comply with all the standard codes. Yes, sir?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just a question on ground contamination.
Yes.
If a business that is an open, broad business, what control mechanisms or regulations are included to ensure that, say, waste disposal of a, of a renter on said property is disposing of something? Like, for example, inappropriate use of a dumpster for a lithium ion battery, or, you know, inappropriate gasoline, like, what kind of regulations for such a business that is allowing for expansion? Does the board recommend that that can be enforced that, you know, while certainly not trying to hinder the growth of an entrepreneurial venture, there is some concern that just like, some, there's a lot of toxicity that's involved in the garage, there's chemicals that are used anywhere from fluid to washout windshield, to gasoline, that has natural runoff. What kind of regulations can be expected from place, because I think the question of health and safety is certainly one of that when it comes to groundwater runoff that runs to irrigated properties and, and such and so on.
I do, I, I understand your question, and if anyone wants to add, but you're referring to state and, to a certain extent, federal environmental code, not thing. This hearing is for the purpose of relief from the zoning bylaws, which do not deal with environmental regulations. They are important for all the reasons that you just listed and, and countless more. Um, but those are in place, those are enforced by the state, probably to a lesser extent, the building department, possibly, a little comment on that.
Yeah, there's certain, certain state permits that are requiring state inspections for used car dealers, for example, have a state license, gasoline dispensing operations certainly have multiple licenses. The local fire departments, and while, for some of the things that you're speaking about, the board of health on a specific occasion, if they were called in, would weigh in. Typically, none of that really crosses my mind's, except as referral to some other agency.
Right. The board of health, or the fire department, or, or the state.
Or the state.
So that, hopefully that answers your question. All, all those regulations are absolutely in place, and we are not being asked, or could we modify them in any way? Um, but, but the ask here is to add the proposed garage on the other side of the property, to bring more of the business inside. And, uh, the determination we need to make is whether or not that makes this nonconforming use more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood, to you all. Typically, unless we start to give information otherwise, a nonconforming use business that has a large portion, portion of its operation being deducted outside, bringing that inside is considered better for the surrounding neighborhood. But we wanna listen to the surrounding neighborhood's opinions on that. What I'm hearing is concerns about this nonconforming use generally, which while valid, aren't what we're ruling on tonight. And so, again, if you have any specific concerns that this garage will make the situation worse, we definitely do want to hear those.
Out of curiosity, what dictated the location of it within the law right there?
Um, because that, at this current time, is, again, where the tow trucks are parked and have been for some time, and it's generally the more already wide-open area without getting involved in any other major moving parts. So it's just a matter of, um, convenience.
Right there, right? Yeah. Yeah.
Um, if it were on the other side, I'm just wondering if that would help, they mentioned barriers of sorts. I don't even know if that would really be, you're bringing the noise closer when you've got, now you're looking at a building.
I think anywhere to put it, um, to move it to the other side of property, the last news is
Most correct, yeah. or create a barrier to any outside noise that wouldn't otherwise be there. Which I think they were talking about some type of, like, year.
Yeah. I'm just asking.
Well, I mean, and you're looking at the building, so...
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. If I was the owner, I would agree that, that. I, I think that's probably where I'd want. Um, yeah. I think, so, again, just to give the, the butters here and, and the members of the public, let me another bite at the apple for questions or comments. Really what gets to the issue tonight is if there are concerns that the addition of this structure makes the concerns that you're raising worse. We know there's a garage there, and it would be better if there wasn't for a, a residential neighborhood. I, I don't think anybody, no one's disagreeing with that. But the question is, is whether this makes the situation worse in any way that we put our finger on. Yes, sir?
Yeah, Rick Bond on three days, so again, I, I know, I don't think it makes the condition worse, but I hope Mr. Finney might think about maybe putting up sound barriers to help Sean and myself, I mean, it's just really it's out of control, and I don't know what's gonna go wrong when we do it, when it's put up, but I think it's probably positive, but I've lived here a long time, and it's just, it's out of control.
I understand.
I have, I have a question specifically about the structure, are there lighting mechanisms? And I didn't actually get this, that hard to see, how tall did they say that the structure would be? And my question was about lighting structures that would be fixed.
Yes, so, uh, lighting is a, is a very good point. Do you have a lighting bylaw, it's, it's not, it looks stringent. I think, um, obviously you'd have to comply with that, but I, I think, as this board has done before with nonconforming usage, we've, we've sort of expanded that a bit to, you know, be sure that we got real downlighting on any portion of the property here, lighting that's not gonna be on all night. Um, you know, uh, ideally, I think that, that the property is what it is now, and I think I, I'd like to see and know that any, any lighting that's on the exterior of this building isn't going to be more total lighting than it's isn't going to be more total lighting than is present in that location now. I mean, obviously lights are on inside, the garage door opens, it's going to be lighting, but beyond that, I think we would like to see a limiting of the exterior lighting on this building, um. And also, I, I do think it's reasonable that we talk about, and I'd like to hear from you folks on it, that we talk about some form of buffer, whether it's beefing up the landscaping on that side where, where flooding is closer home.
There's probably a noise, noise barriers.
On, on gates, but whether it's noise or vision, I, something's better than nothing. I would just assume, not being familiar with what it's like to sit on your porch and whatnot, I, I'd like to see the the parties work together on that. I, knowing that whatever they, they're not going to green monster and whatever they do isn't going to make there not be a garage next door. But, um, I think I, I think it's reasonable, given such a garage that we have a building here and a relief that the grant to expect some sort of additional buffering. I think sound buffering's hard, because I think to make something that's actually going to make it quieter when a big truck is pulling in and out at nine forty-five at night, is going to be something that you don't want to look at. So it gets, it gets pretty complicated, but, you know, so I, probably is sound buffering out there that will make a difference, but I'm pretty sure it's not something you're going to want to look at. Um, but, you know, for these art providers or something, or a nice, I just, I just put up a big old fence and it's a pretty nice buffer, um, something that we can look at to give these folks a, a little more, less awareness of what's going on next door, especially late at night. It's one thing to hear a tow truck pull in and out, it's another to hear it and see the headlights and all of that. So I think they can send you something there.
There's no fence back there, right down there.
Um, but these warehouses, wait, I think they all have fences.
Is there?
Just, yeah, all, all manner of, except for, um, just one.
How, how high is the building that would be? Similar to the, the red barn we built recently, or higher, bigger than that?
Um, similar, right, it's an eighteen foot roofing.
Oh.
Oh, so, well within the bottom line? So, I think what I would propose, that the board find that provided lighting on the exterior of the building is limited, especially in comparison to any lighting that is existing on that side of the property now. And that some effort for some buffering along the western property line is, is made and I hesitate to be more specific on that. Um, just because I don't know what's going to work out to be best, whether it's an art providing or something like that, or whether it's a fence, or some sort of barrier, um, that the board find that those mitigations in place, that the proposed garage is not a change or intensification of non-conforming uses that is substantially more detrimental to the surrounding area. I'll second. Although, uh, I, I think I would add that in, in the opinion of a building inspector, when he sees the final building permit plans, if there, if there's any question that some effort at buffering, or there's any question that the lighting might be offensive, then you just send it right back to us. I, I think that's the only way of force those submissions. I don't, I don't want to make you determine what would be satisfactory to us.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it if there's any question, we'll talk about it.
Yeah. Um, all right, with that, uh, we have seconded, and of course that's Janine, I apologize and leaving her plan out. That's the proposed garage, shown on the Moore's plan, dated June sixth, twenty twenty-two. And that has been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. Hey, thank you. All right, if you want to take a stab at a change in use.
I'll step up.
I like it. Fifth, we're going to move on to our sixth application, brought by Jennifer Clark and Matej Usen. Hope I pronounced that all right. Of fifteen eleventh Avenue in Situate, requesting a special permit refining in accordance with NGL forty-eight, section six, and section eight, ten point two of the bylaw, and any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow for the extension and structural change to a single family dwelling, our pre-existing non-conforming lot at fifteen eleventh avenue.
Good evening, I'm the contractor, Jennifer Clark is on as the homeowner, and we also have Joe Webby and Alyssa as our engineer and architect. Uh, we are requesting a special permit to allow for the extension and structural change to an existing house on a pre-existing non-conforming lot due to lot area width and frontage. Uh, the proposed design is to enclose the area of the existing front and rear decks with a heated living space and increase the square footage by fifty-six percent, which is nine hundred ninety-one square feet. Uh, the new addition or change to our structure will fully con- conform to all dimensions and requirements and will not create any new conformities and will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Any, uh, questions?
Front yard. The proposed twenty-one, but that will be inconformant because the average. That's correct.
Correct.
Um, and that, uh, just to confirm where that twenty-one nine is measured. Trying to see that on a plan.
Uh, Joe?
I got three.
Yeah, three.
I got it. Existing, proposed addition, got it. Going over. So other than coming closer to the front, but still being in compliance, you're, we're, we're not changing any of the setbacks otherwise.
Correct.
And we are remaining entirely in the building envelope. And we have a lot that's small and skinny.
Correct.
Which is not anything you're going to change.
Correct.
All right. George, any additional questions?
Nope, I'm all set with this one.
Bob, anything of note? Any members of the public with any questions or comments on fifteen eleventh avenue? On here? On Zoom, no? So I'll make a motion that the board find that the proposed addition at fifteen eleventh avenue, shown on the plan, drawn by Joseph Webby and dated June ninth, twenty twenty-two, uh, should receive, the requested special permit, and the board find that the proposed addition does not create any new non-conformities and that the extension intensifies any existing non-conformities. Such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. All those in favor? Aye.
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 There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, folks.
Thank you very much.
Janine, did you have one? Right, a bit too excited. Uh, moving on to our seventh application, brought by David Boyke and Christine Collins of seventeen Hazel Avenue in Situate, requesting a special permit refining in accordance with NGL forty-eight, section six, and section eight, ten point two of the bylaw, and any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow for the expansion of the single family dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot at seventeen Hazel Avenue, increasing the gross floor area by more than forty percent. Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Dave Garde, I'm the architect.
David Boyke.
Hi, Dave. So, hi. Yeah, so this is a, it's an unconforming lot, it's ninety-four hundred square feet, uh, six hundred under the required ten thousand. And the minimum block width is ninety-four point three, it's a little, a little under there as well. Um, the proposed addition would consist of expanding the existing wreathway by a hundred and five square feet and then building an addition over the existing garage and wreathway, um, which is an additional six hundred and eight square. So the total new construction is seven hundred and twelve square feet. Uh, approximately forty percent of this. The existing, all the existing setbacks will be maintained and they're all conforming. As I said, the existing footprint will just be expanded on the ground floor by a hundred and five square.
Yes. Once again, no, no real change to the conformity of structure and the loss of lot. All right, so just, just so we have it, um, did you, I, I've heard the increased number, do you have the existing and the current? Yep, we have proposed twenty-five hundred and seventeen forty-six, that's what it is there.
Yeah, we have one on the plan.
On what? Anyone, any questions? George?
No, I'll set on this.
Bob, anything to add?
No, fine.
Any members of the public on seventeen Hazel Avenue? Okay. It's a fun house, I, I like seeing somebody's older houses get brought up into, uh, keeping them realistic and usable. But it's old, it doesn't work anymore, and now you think it looks just about good, I like it. Rather than just saying you do house at all. Um, I'll make a motion that the board find that the proposed addition shown on the plot plan by Michael Clancy and dated May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, should, would receive their requested special permit and the board find that the proposed addition doesn't create any new non-conformities and any intensification of existing non-conformities is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding area.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Much.
That's really a copier.
Anthony?
Yes?
Uh, when we're done with these, can the board stay on for a couple of seconds? It's a scheduling question for the next, uh, for the next month.
Oh, absolutely.
You're, you're not going to be there.
We're going to move on to our eighth application, I'm going to fill up my water tomorrow. The fourth, the eighth application, we have to. We're going to move on to our eighth application, brought by Janine Ripley of nineteen, one ninety, Captain Pierce Road in Situate, requesting a special permit refining in accordance with NGL forty-eight, section six, and section nine, fifty point two D, and ten point, eight, ten point two of Situate zoning bylaw and any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to construct an addition onto the rear portion of the existing non-conforming single family dwelling at one ninety Captain Pierce Road, increasing the gross floor area by more than twenty percent. Good, how are you? I'm back.
Matt Mitchell from the Lorimer, releasing here on behalf of the applicant, Janine Ripley. Um, as you can see through the plan, this is an addition going at the rear of the house. The purpose of the addition is so that the applicant can move from mother to, uh, so that they can be together. Um, the addition does not, um, increase any non-conformity until dimensional requirements. The only non-conformity of the lot is frontage, and the frontage does not change this project. Yeah, the front yard setback, I'm sorry, is it twenty, is that twenty-three, twenty? So the addition will not increase non-conformity until dimensional requirements.
We have a, the addition is extending into the Water Resource Protection District, which is different than the infamous buffers on. Correct. Less, less onerous than we want. Correct. Um, so, what, and I may have Bruce here, what is triggered by extending that into the protection district?
Yeah, so it, it gets back to the fifteen percent per use coverage.
Yes.
Limitation for this property, point five acres, looks at about thirty-eight hundred square feet.
And thirty-eight hundred square feet is a lot, so if we're not. Yeah, we're not, we're not, you're not doubling the per use area that was there before we started, so. So I think, I think we should probably just, if you could throw that calculation at us after the fact here, so provided we stay under that fifteen percent, I think we should have it as part of the application. Other than that wrinkle, I didn't see much that was any different from the last two. We just do. Is that a septic system there at the back, is that a swimming pool?
A septic system is in there.
Yes, any questions? Well, so, so I see it here, well, everything looks like, everything looks like a dry hole to me. Could be a swimming pool, right? George?
Nope.
Bob, anything?
No, I, I want to, I'd want to see, as you just said, the conversations with the groups.
Yeah. Um, any, Bruce, anything else?
Yeah, I don't think they're going to hit it, but, uh, yeah, I don't think so, yeah.
Um, I think, uh, it's like the homeowner and we have, uh, Mr. Manz Field or Fred, any good comments or questions? It's like you're the only one who's stuck with us. I don't think so. So, um, I will make a motion that, uh, by the board, we By the board receives, I don't even need a revised plan, a simple note or calculation from Mister Morse. Confirming the percentage of the purbiest area on the lot, that's less than fifteen, which I think we're all sure it is. That the board grant the requested permit and find. Proposed addition does not create any new nonconformities. And to the extent it's intensifies existing nonconformities. That such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. And of course, the addition being shown on the Morse's plan dated six fifteen twenty-two. All second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if you'd be able to assist with that decision.
We have to address that for.
Thank you very much. Um. So we have, so Minus, Jeanine, what ones were circulated by you?
Um our June regular meeting, you can go to two prior forty meetings.
That's right. A motion to approve the three meetings of minutes circulated previously by Jean. Um obviously, to the extent each of us was in attendance for those individual hearings.
Second, I would start with all.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then um just some additional business. As I mentioned to some members of the board before the hearing. I would like to step down from acting as the chair for our regular meetings. Um I think unless the board disagrees, probably makes sense to have me continue to be the chair. For the pending forty B's since I've started working with some of the other folks in town. And so I'll continue to act as chair for that forty B through its conclusion. And um my plan is to remain on the board through the conclusion of that forty B. Uh but then to step down. I plan to send up a credit which Jeanine, the board's lacking to notify them of that. I think it'd be great if they they got that process going, so the board made it full strength. Immediately when I do step down and unless the rest of the board disagree. I would nominate George to take my place as chair as soon as the um August regular meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 So.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, so can we do that effective the September regular meeting? Because um I am on vacation for the August regular meeting. And I would prefer not not to chair it remotely.
Sure, so so it looks like it's it's up to the three of you for August anyway, cause I'm also not here. Yep.
Yeah.
So should you go up for the acting chair? I like it, you, well, if you're not here, we'll figure it out.
Alright.
August and April are typically the tough ones.
Right.
August is a is a light agenda.
Sure, that's, we'll try to keep it light.
Good.
Um you guys got away with one, I was on vacation earlier, so you went like two, or it was four to continue.
Five minute, we had a five-minute meeting.
Yeah, I think it was.
That was like the fifteen-minute meeting.
Right.
Alright, so so Anthony, so you're gonna stay on as a board member through the forty B? And then you're stepping down from the board completely, right?
That is right, that is right.
Alright.
That. Yeah, do you know off the, you don't have to know off the top of your head, you know?
I have to know, it's October twenty-fourth.
October twenty-fourth is when we have to have it done by, and I think I've mentioned to the applicant, I think at the last hearing. I I really don't want to ask the applicant to extend that, cuz I I think we really should. Be able to get our act together over the next two hearings.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, he agreed to extend it if need be.
If needed, and and we will, but I really hope we don't. I think our next meeting, which will be in September, it was to be some back and forth between the engineers before then. And then I think that would be a long meeting. And then I I'm optimistic that the twenty motions at the October meeting will fall down.
So we have, our next meeting on the forty B is in August, right, it's a it's.
Sorry, it's at the end of August, yes.
End of August, just to be clear, okay.
Yes, not September, I was.
Right, and then we have the October meeting.
We will presumably have time for for two more.
Right.
Um but we'll. We'll, I think the next meeting's gonna be very telling.
Right.
See where we're going with that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn for. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, yes.
I do have some funny clarification.
Sure.
At the end of the second application. Uh we had a side conversation here, so I'm not sure why, but I did wanna convey that. Uh the Water Resource Protection District, that's the least uh aggressive in terms of the bylaws. There's that fifteen percent in purbiest, and if they address the stormwater runoff. They can go well beyond even twenty percent.
Right.
So um. The engineer here was talking about a twenty percent limit. I just wanna make sure that the applicant doesn't think there's a twenty percent limit.
Yeah. Okay, yes. Right.
It it's all a function of the mitigation at that point.
Right, yeah, so I think what we needed there, for me at first, we need to know the percentages, so we know what we're dealing with. And then we need the applicant to opine on their mitigation. Hopefully a little bit more than that one lot that was in there. And then I think also, my biggest concern there was I picked up my plan, I only got my packet yesterday. And that plan showing through the well wasn't in that packet, so now we're talking about less than a day. To review that, that doesn't allow us to properly prepare for the meeting. I like to prepare for the last minute, so it's all fresh.
I just have plan in here what we got.
Yeah, yeah, that came in today or yesterday, the last night.
That plan. Uh yesterday. Yesterday.
Yeah, yesterday later in the day, right, so.
And drywalls are acceptable? I think so, but uh you know, part of the decision sizing.
Yes, you're the recharge the drywall.
So the recharge chamber is a lot.
Well, right, you can have engineered recharge chambers or. Or you gotta be able to prove the bylaw and do the job.
So you can't consider it anywhere, you know, it's gotta be sufficient probably.
Right, and and we look to the applicant to, right.
You know, I think the.
Say why they think it's sufficient.
Yeah, it's not really the applicant's fault. I don't think. From the nuances that were necessary for these compliance issues.
I do think that.
He wasn't, the engineer wasn't even present for.
Wasn't present for the first meeting, and it doesn't look like their communication is right there, so.
Just as a, as an aside, looking hard at the last application. I think they're gonna, they're gonna be over the fifteen percent.
You do?
Oh, yeah, there's all kinds of stuff going on, there's all kinds of. The concrete patio, you gotta count the point one, you gotta count the uh.
We're still on, yes.
Point one, count it.
Absolutely, it's not per- not perbiest.
Yeah, but it catches one.
Uh no, no, also.
Now, if it's if it's lying, right?
Power move like a cat.
So. So there, if, since we're still in our meeting, we're still recording.
That's a big, I mean, obviously, they've done.
Well, twinkle makes a calculation, and I'm sure his calculation would be right. But but once he makes that calculation, it's over fifteen, they gotta come back.
And the the one, it it looked like they were only a couple of feet into the Water Resource.
Yeah, I mean, the alternative is to uh change slightly the floor plan of the addition, so they don't.
It was only a spot, they don't, it was just scotch.
You know, I don't know why that wasn't done in the mission.
Right.
I was surprised, but um.
But, you know, that is.
I'm sure that they might even make the argument that they don't need any mitigation. If they're at sixteen percent or this much in the district, we should certainly hear them out.
We'll certainly.
But I think that's a that's a conversation that we didn't have, that we would have if they're over fifteen. So unfortunately, I do think they have to come back if they're over fifteen.
Yeah. Right.
Um yeah.
Either with mitigation or a change in.
With anything, I just think, but we didn't give them relief there or make a finding on that. We made a finding assuming that they were under fifteen.
Right.
And so hopefully.
But they don't wanna come back, they can shorten it up and resubmit it.
Yeah. Alright, uh I will remake that motion to adjourn, thank you very much, Bruce.
Thanks, Bruce.